Good evening and welcome to the Village Board meeting for the village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, February 28. We're back live in the room, but also in parallel on Zoom. You can always go to our website, pleasantville-ny.gov, and pick up the link for the Zoom meeting. And within a few days, a video of our session will also be posted at pctv76.org. So as reported, we're back in the room. The world of COVID has started to look better. I was on the county call today, and the numbers in the county are looking dramatically better than they were two months ago. Like thousands fewer cases than we had four weeks ago, and many thousands fewer cases than we had eight weeks ago. So all that's great news. As no doubt you have heard, Governor Hochul has lifted the required mask mandate in a bunch of settings, including schools, effective tomorrow, or the day after tomorrow, I guess. And I can report on behalf of Shane, who is here behind the camera, that the Board of Vacation is having a meeting tomorrow night, in which those matters will be discussed. So really great news. God willing, it will all continue to head in the right direction. It feels like perhaps we're headed to the end of this grim two-year period. County Executive noted today on a call with the municipalities that we're almost exactly at the two-year anniversary of the first case that was identified here in Westchester. So it's been a tough time, a bit of a roller coaster. Many thousands of people died. And the county is going to be organizing a remembrance program, which is, I think, next week. Do you have that date, Eric? It's going to be a Facebook Live occasion, not only to remember and honor all of those who were lost in all of this, but to honor the struggle and sacrifice of so many individuals and so many families.
Thursday, March 3rd at 2:00.
Okay, Thursday, March 3rd at 2:00. You can go to westchestergov.com, and they'll have the link to the Facebook Live. So I had a few other announcements to make, if I can get back to the right theme here. Obviously, vaccines are still really important. The county executive made clear that at this point, the county in their accounting for vaccines is no longer saying two doses and a booster, but instead three doses. That three doses are, in essence, the standard of care. If you've got the Moderna or the Pfizer vaccine, there are still plenty of places you can go and get a vaccine, and you can get it without charge. So again, westchestergov.com is a great place to start to find out all of that information. So we've begun the budget process. Eric Norine and all the department heads have been closeted in meeting after meeting after meeting. I'm trying to put together the budget. That will get posted towards the, what, the third week of March. Eric, you want to just report the schedule for all of that?
Yep, so over the next couple of weeks, we're going to be having budget work sessions. So we just talked about Monday will be DPW will do via Zoom. Tuesday will be the Police Department via Zoom. The tentative budget needs to be filed with the village clerk by Friday, March 18th. That is not the final budget. That's tentative budget. The board then has the opportunity to amend as they see fit. Budget presentation to the board will occur on March 28th. The budget public hearing will be April 11th, and the planned budget adoption would be Monday, April 25th. So the whole process should be wrapped up by the end of April with the budget filing before May 1st.
Okay, so I think that the sort of preliminary story there is that lots of aspects of our budget are stable, but inflation is certainly rearing its head, especially in the realm of healthcare premiums and the like. So we will keep you up to date as that develops. Just a couple of other things, some of which I had mentioned before. We've partnered with Sustainable Westchester in a recycling app called Recycle Right. It's available on iPhone or Android, and it's a great opportunity. You can type in your address and find out exactly when your pickups are. You can get an automatic reminder of your pickups. You can get an automatic notification when a pickup has changed. It's a great way to keep track of what's going on in the holiday season, when we have holidays that affect the pickup. So Recycle Right in both app stores for Apple and Android. I remind everybody that one of the things that arose out of our police reform process was a weekly posting of a police blotter. Chief Rutter is posting that, and you can get that sent to you automatically if you sign up for that for the Village News. You can also get it at our website, pleasantville-ny.gov. A great way to keep track of what's going on in the village and get a sense for how your police department spends its time, and also for the dynamics within the village in general. I encourage you to do that. At the same time, County Executive Latimer announced just last week a new app for the county police. Obviously, that's of special interest to communities like, for example, Mount Kisco, that are primarily policed by the county. But you can also go to the app store, Apple or Android, and search on Westchester County Police and download that app. It's an opportunity to be aware of what's going on in the county police if you are so inclined.
Do you know what it's called?
It is called, I can tell you what it's called. It's called, hmm, well, if you Google Westchester County Police Department, that's what the app looks like. I don't know what the actual app is called. I already downloaded it in their form. But anyway, again, I think that arose in part out of the county's process of police reform, just trying to find ways to make it clearer to everybody what's going on. We're in the midst of planning for Pleasantville Day. That resolution is on tonight. That date is, I can look further, and do you have that at your beck and call, Eric?
It is May 21st.
So Pleasantville Day, which has been a great tradition and a tradition on hold in recent, last couple of COVID years, is back, May 21st. Worth noting, for folks who would like to get rid of some potentially private documents, the county shredmobile is coming to our DPW yard on Saturday, March 5, between 10:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. So you can come with, I think, up to two boxes of personal documents. It's not a source for business documents, but the mobile shredder is coming to Pleasantville on Saturday, March 5. County Department of Transportation, or State Department of Transportation, gave us an update, which we pushed out as well, on what's going on in the Sawmill Parkway. Pile driving is going to continue, taking place Monday to Friday, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. through approximately May 2022, at which point, here's hoping, the pile driving will be finished. But the project itself will obviously go on quite a bit further, so. Then the last thing I wanted to mention, just because quite a few people have asked me about it. The yellow house that is to the right of BRS on the Manville roadside was in the hands of a bank for a very long time, and we have been frustrated by the fact that they had not accomplished its sale, and also frustrated by the difficulty of making sure that snow and ice got cleared. But I am happy to report that a sale has been consummated, that property is now back in private hands. And so we look forward to seeing some progress there. Can't come a day too soon. It's been a long, long struggle. So anybody else have something they wanted to announce?
So it's called the Westchester County PD app, just to follow up on what your announcement earlier. And this is sort of half announcement, half idea, just to say, I met, last night, we all meet separately with committees. I met with Pleasantville Recycles, for which I'm the liaison, and they have a number of events coming up for which they would like volunteers. So I think it would be good for us to sort of push out, maybe through social media and other ways, various volunteer opportunities that exist within the village and on different committees. So if you're new to Pleasantville, you're probably not tuning in, in case you are. Volunteering can be a great way to get to know people and to get more involved. You know, you mentioned the Westchester County Police app. We have a police committee that is focused on enhancing communication, having to do with our police department connecting with different sectors of the community. And another example is the Recycling Committee that's involved in various activities, such as the sports swap and the Halloween costume swap and things like that. So I guess I would say, look for more information about volunteer opportunities coming forward.
Thank you for that. So next is a special mention. There's some folks who have been anchors in this community in various ways for a very long time, and one always imagines that it would be disloyal of them to retire. But the day comes for everyone. So we are happy to honor Vivian Guferati, such a longstanding figure at the library, on occasion of retirement. David Vajamori, take it away.
Yeah, so when you look across the village and the town, all of the many departments that we operate, from the police to buildings to Recreation Department, everybody aspires to the relationship that the Mount Pleasant Public Library has with villagers and residents of the town. And there really isn't any closer, warmer, and more helpful relationship probably that exists in this community. And so when we lose somebody who has been a fixture and part of that community for nearly a quarter of a century, it's a big deal to us. So I'd like to thank, formally thank, on behalf of the village of Pleasantville and the Board of Trustees, Vivian Guferati, for her 24 years of service to the Mount Pleasant Public Library, her professionalism and deep knowledge of all aspects of library operations, and her commitment to its patrons have set a very high standard for all who will follow her in library service. This is issued this 28th day of February, 2022, honoring her service on behalf of a grateful community. And on behalf of the mayor, we are declaring March 1st, 2022, to be known as Vivian Guferati Day throughout the village. And here is something that we'll deliver to her personally. So thank you so much, Vivian. Would you like to say a word, you're on Zoom?
I just want to say thank you. It is an honor, and I appreciate the efforts of the board to make this proclamation. I just said it's been an absolute pleasure to serve at the library for all those years. It is truly a wonderful place to work, and I know it is the heart of the community in many ways. So again, thank you all, and the best to everybody at the library and the village.
Well, thanks to you, Vivian, and you're correct that it's the heart of the village in many ways, in no small part due to your efforts over all these many years in serving in so many different roles, and have kind of covered pretty much all the bases in library service. So we will miss you, but we wish you the best, and we'll envision you doing great things in the next chapter of your life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Is there any comment of any kind from the public, either in the room or on Zoom? If you had something to say, raise your hand. I see a hand raised.
Hi, is my mic working?
It is, you sound great, John.
Hi, hi, everybody. Just want to thank you all for doing that. I cannot tell you how much Vivian has done for the library, how many times she's gone above and beyond in addition to putting up with me. So it's very well-earned.
Well, thank you, John Fieron, Library Director, for those kind words about Vivian. And then thank you for all you do, for having created the context for the success of so many of the staff members there.
John, I was just sharing with the board before the meeting started that thanks to your exceptional financial stewardship of the library, and thanks to your making really good friends with lots of villagers and getting bequests, that you're starting on a master planning process, which will end up with an even better library and a better space for the village in the future and for the town.
Thanks, yeah, it's pretty exciting. We're looking to upgrade the main library, the branch library, bring it into the 21st century. It was built before teens existed and when children were kind of announcing thoughts, and that's really the core business now. So we did the surveys, and we're hoping to have more public involvement. So we'll be publicizing a lot of events over the next year about that. It's a nice way to come back after COVID, too, something exciting, something positive, yeah.
It certainly is. It's a great news, and as David already said, not only happy news, but a sign of the kind of stewardship that you provided for all these many years.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Any new business, comment from the public of any kind? Yes, sir, come on up to the microphone, if you would, and let us know your name and address, and what you are concerned about.
Yes, it's Tom Rooney at 26.
Hold on, Tom, I'm just going to zoom in on you here, on my joystick. Okay, we got you.
Did you get my mask?
Yeah, I did, it's beautiful.
Once again, Tom Rooney, 26 Hillview Drive, Pleasantville, of course. And I just have a couple questions and some statements that I would just like to make, so that they're public. What I'd be asking the Village Board to try to do, I'm suggesting to you that you put some type of building moratorium into effect for our village. It is overbuilt. The projects that are ongoing now are skyscraper in scope, and it's going to add a completely different flavor to this town. And in my one person's opinion, that scope of building never should have been able to been built in this village. It conforms to nothing that we have in this town in terms of architecture. So I'm asking that if there is some way going forward that no more projects of that scope even be considered to be built into this village. So that's question statement number one, having to do with the DOT project and the green space project, the elimination of the slip lane. I just want to know if you've given any consideration to where the delivery tractor trailer trucks will be making their deliveries when that slip lane is removed. Right now, they pull up, the 18-wheelers pull up in front of the memorial, and they block that portion of the slip lane now. But at least there's room on the opposite side for cars to pass. Tractor trailer trucks and box trucks park right on Manville Road Bridge, right by Pub Street. I've actually seen 18-wheelers on Wheeler Avenue. I've seen that once. I've never saw that again, because it was a nightmare. Nobody could get anywhere. So I just wonder if, with all the consideration of that project, that a very simple thing, deliveries for all the businesses, where are those trucks possibly going to stop, where are they going to park? So that was statement number two. As far as the swimming pool and the green space go, I kind of want to just put these questions together. You're asking for or planning on $3-plus million possible for the pool, which I think is a very low estimate for that project, in addition to whatever additional funds are necessary for the reservoir that obviously needs to be corrected before you should build at the pool. In addition to that, the $4-plus million for the green space, that I think on the agenda tonight, you were budgeting for that or going forward to get the monies for something for that. I just don't know where all this money from our taxpayers are going to be coming from. The green space, as I've said before, is not necessary for this village to have that scope of a project, particularly now in light of that, I call it the skyscraper next to the post office. The taxpayers should not be funding a green space for the high-density apartment building that's going to be there. Sure, it'll be nice for them to look out the windows and see something like that, but I personally don't want to pay for it. The monies for that green space, I would really like to request the town to reconsider. I'm sure you're not going to stop it. I'm sure you're going to go through with it. But hopefully, you're not going to go through with it with the amount of money that you are talking about, being that you're going to spend $3-plus million for the swimming pool. And, I mean, $3 million to rebuild that whole pool, I think that's a pipe dream. That's going to be a whole lot more money than that, without considering whatever monies would be necessary for the reservoir. So what I am requesting that the town board to consider is that that money for the green space be greatly reduced, and put that money towards the building of the swimming pool, which benefits everybody in this town. Not a park that we really don't need another one of. If you just look at the other parks that are in this town, go count the people that are in it, and it has nothing to do with COVID. So I respectfully ask these questions. I hope that people are listening to them. And I don't know what the plans are for going forward for the green space or for the slip lane, but there's many flaws in those two things. Hopefully, that you will see that before it's too late. So I thank you for the time for me to speak.
All right, let me just, obviously, unpacking all those things is probably beyond the scope of this meeting, but let me just touch on a couple of things. The first is, we have nothing on the agenda tonight to set aside $4 million for the green space. The act on our agenda tonight that I think you may be referring to is the creation of a capital account.
Yes.
For the Manville Road Carter project. That's the project that we have $1.6 million in grants for, and which is from Grant to Tompkins. That project will close the slip lane, but it does not create a park, and there has been no commitment to building the park. And I don't know where you got the $4 million number.
No, if I may, that was the number that the board put out for the green space to be built. That's what I was referring to.
No, I don't think we put that number out.
The bond resolution for the Manville Road project was $4 million. Maybe that's the number.
Right, and that was allowing us to borrow that much, the potential for that, because the grant pays us back, we had to pay it upfront. We're very close to signing a contract with a low bidder, and I'm happy to report that the project is back in the realm we originally expected it to be, $2.25 million all in, of which $1.6 million is refunded to us in a grant. So that's where we are right now. The result of that is that we would, assuming everything goes the way it looks like it's going to go, see that construction starting in the later spring, summer, that season. That will close the slip lane. That will create a right-turn-only lane between Valvoline and the War Monuments, new signalization at that corner, some modifications at that corner, and then the pedestrian improvements that we've talked about many times, and which I think are available in the special project section of our website in the left side. So that's where we are right now. I understand your disagreements about all of this, but that's where we are right now, and there's been no commitment to build the park, although I can speak for myself, and I think most of my colleagues, we would like to see that happen. Is there any certainty that we can make that happen? There isn't. So I gather from your comments that you support the idea of rebuilding the pool.
I do.
Okay, so you said that benefits everyone in the community. It doesn't. I can tell you, there are many people in the community who say, I don't use the pool. I don't want you to spend that money on the pool. If the people who do use the pool would like a new pool and one that will last another 50 years, let them pay for it. So again, we're all in the world of a community that seeks to thread the needle between the various goals that individual parts of the community have, so that we build a better, stronger community, and one that, for the most part, gets most people to coalesce around the recognition that not everything we do is benefiting everyone directly, but that it's benefiting the life of the community at large. And I think we've done pretty well with that, I have to say. I don't know if you would disagree with that, but people are voting with their feet, both in terms of folks who stay here despite the high cost of living here in these parts, but also folks who are moving here, because Pleasantville is a pretty darn good place to live. Not just because of the things we're doing now, but because of the great tradition we have. And I can tell you that all of us are mindful of the need to update our world for new conditions. And you are upset, as I know well, about the scale of the building at 70 Memorial, and it's the post office. But as I think you also know, having lived your entire life, that building on top of a rock had turned into a vacant parcel that really had almost no opportunity to be redeveloped, given its absence of parking, its lack of ADA access, and the condition of the building. So we certainly didn't want somebody to build something there without parking, and we went through a long and deliberative couple-of-year process, the record of which is all out there, resulting in a decision to rezone that one block to four stories to allow enough economic potential in a site like that to build the parking underneath, and that is what we have achieved. Yes, it's a big building by Pleasantville standards. It will also be a very significant contributor to the tax base. And I can tell you with certainty that the idea of building the civic space arose long before we had any idea of that project. It is certainly not devised primarily to benefit the folks who live in that apartment building. And I understand your feelings about it. I respect them, but lots of folks disagree with that. So happy to unpack more of it. We probably now isn't the right setting, but I hear you. I understand your thoughts, and the board here has all heard it. So anybody else want to add anything to that?
It's not that, it's not so much being opposed to what was built or being built by the post office.
Yes.
It's just the scope of it. It is just so huge. I mean, you come into, you see it, you see it from afar.
Yes, you do.
From the parkway, and then you come off the parkway and you see the Depew Street Vanderbilt Avenue project.
You do.
Another skyscraper-type building. You don't see that much from the village, because most of it, fortunately, is below. But the poor people under Pew, they have no view anymore. But anyway, that's not to be said. Those are in process, they're not going to change. I'm only asking that consideration be made in the future, that that scope of project not be built if there is more space in the village. Because I am fearful that that's, things like that are going to happen at the Girl Scouts, possibly. Might happen in the old village at the church. Might happen in a number of places, the old county trust bank building.
So let me just touch on those three. The Girl Scout building and the former Methodist church on Maple Hill are both zoned, small-scale residential. Maple Hill, single-family residential. The Girl Scout building on the Bedford roadside, I think, is zoned two or three family, and on the Great Oaks side, single families. So nothing can happen at the scale you would suggest at either of those sites. at either of those sites without a zoning change. In the case of the former Bank of New York building here, that is in the A1 district, and that building is five stories, which is a noncompliant under our longstanding zoning code, but pre-existing nonconforming. So it can't be expanded at five stories. If someone wanted to build, for example, adjacent to it on that parking lot or whatever, they could build three stories, absolutely. There's a parking requirement. That's a significant threshold to leap. The project at the former Laduka Auto on DePew and the Sawmill is, as of right, in existing zoning. That zoning has existed for 50 years or more. I can tell you that I personally didn't grow up imagining that that was a likely site for residential so close to the Sawmill, but the world in which we live, it turns out, there you have it. So I will say, again, speaking personally, but I think it was vetted in a very public process. If we're going to have a more dense project like Seventy Memorial next to the post office, that's the right place for it.
Yeah, I want to add just a general comment, which is that I think that we, I'll go on a limb and speak for the board. We share with you a concern that we don't want, you know, an overdevelopment of the village that would feel sort of out of proportion of the scope of the village. And I understand your reservations about Seventy Memorial Plaza. It's definitely a change, and I think it's a little bit in its ugly duckling phase right now, I suspect. And I think, you know, the way that it'll look will change over time, but I understand that. So we, you know, in terms of, as Peter has explained, in terms of the scope of that project, that block is the only place zoning-wise where that is possible. And, you know, these things are not always in our control. There's zoning that exists as it is, at least for now. But we are also trying to sort of create a balance. You know, there are some advantages to having these kinds of projects. For instance, they will bring a lot of foot traffic to our downtown, which I see as a beneficial thing. We have a vibrant downtown right now, and I think we have a good chance that that will remain because there will be enough of a customer base there to support the businesses that are there. But by the same token, you know, we want change to remain within the scope of what feels comfortable for this village. So we have a kind of, a limited amount of control that we can exercise over these things. But I, so my comment is more about, I think, in terms of like the spirit of things, we probably agree with you more than you might think.
Yeah, the, so there's a balancing act that we have in the village. Eric, how much, between the police and civil service, how much does our cost basis for the village go up every year? Is it like seven or eight percent?
Yeah, it's about a half a million a year.
Yeah, so the problem is that we cannot, if we do nothing, if there's no additional development of any sort in the village, taxes will get much more expensive because we're going up well above the rate of inflation. I think a quarter of our budget is police, is that right?
The general fund budget, probably about that.
And, you know, if you look at our costs for retired employees, healthcare, all those things, it's just significant. So given that, you know, we can encourage more light industrial development. We can find places for more residential development to increase the tax base. In a worst-case scenario, we could end up with an Amazon warehouse or something like that. I don't think that's what anybody wants.
I don't think.
Not referring to anything in particular.
Have you gone down 9A like?
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. So I think the, and this is not this board, but I think the wisdom of the last master plan was to say, you know what, if we're going to have to find ways to try to control tax hikes while refreshing some very old infrastructure, while these personnel costs skyrocket, the place that we want to do it is in controlled area downtown where if we put people in there, whether they're working or living, they're going to be walking and driving out and not, and not creating, you know, even more of a problem for the village as people who drive into the downtown from other parts of the village can. And it's a hard thing, you know. It's, it just can't, there's no possible way with our personnel costs increasing as much as they have to keep everything the same. So it's just, you just have to decide what's going to be different. I mean, that's the crux of the problem.
You know, I might add to that. I think Nicole is right that we likely agree with you more than you realize. I mean, I've lived here, you've lived here your whole life. I've lived here 37 years. And I assure you, there is no part, there is no part of me that wants to, you know, repaper the world with a very different Pleasantville. By the same token, I've sat at this table long enough in various capacities, dating back to my life on the planning commission, to see what happens when properties end up moribund. I'm the guy that, you know, I could point out the bathroom fixtures in my house that I bought at Lane Plumbing. The time came that Lane Plumbing no longer existed. The building on the Rock, now where Seventy Memorial is being built, was a vibrant building. I stood there one time as the village honored the then-owner for a beautification project when he had built that railroad tie, sort of cascading steps up to the building. Again, that dates back to the late 80s. By fast forward 20 years later, those were essentially dead sites. The village swooped in and bought the lane lot. We use it for parking. I think that was the right thing to do. The building on the Rock was a very, very difficult parcel, and we thought long and hard about how to restore it to some vibrant role. And the result you see is what we believed then, and I think the market has validated, was the only realistic way forward, unless we were going to force upon the community either a dying tax asset, a dying asset to the economy and our visual infrastructure, or, on the other hand, something new with no parking that exacerbated the already difficult problem. So it's a blessing and a curse to sort of be aware of all these various things and wish the world were different than it is. But what we're trying to do is keep Pleasantville as Pleasantville as it can possibly be, especially the best parts of it, but tweak it for the new world. We didn't change the world to kill some of the vibrant businesses that were once here. The world changed around us, so we're trying.
The other two cookies is, I know this is not in your control, but what is the delay with the building opposite the firehouse? The apartment building? Can you find that? Is it like 90% done?
Yeah, so here is what I, what I end up trying to scroll back to. That project, as perhaps you recall, was originally went into foreclosure as a private venture. Eventually, at the end of the Astorian administration, it was purchased by the county and sold to an organization to do affordable housing. They have gotten nowhere near the finish line, although obviously a significant amount of work. We're in very regular contact with the county, which has some influence over this because it was a contract that they created. I'm cautiously optimistic that we're going to see some movement on that, but it is a great frustration to all of us, I can tell you.
Okay, and then finally, whatever new construction will in the future go up, like whatever from the Burns Theater up the next block, that's all scheduled to come down within the next, what, three or four years or something?
You mean the section of Washington?
Yes.
With the real estate office on the corner?
Yeah. My only thought for that is, would you make a note to the review board to try to put a building facade there that somewhat fits with the town? Because the other one, by try and buy, I mean, that modern-type building just doesn't fit with any of the houses or the other structures that are around. Not saying I'm opposed to building it, something's got to go there. But the shape of it could be. And I point out that the apartment building complex that they built on the old Mar property.
Right.
Now, A, it is too big for that site, but B, they did a really nice job architecturally with the way that that building looks. It fits in with the village. But the other architectural designs do not. So if anything can be said before it happens to try to get a plan that that looks well? I mean, for example, the low-income that they built in Chappaqua between the railroad and the parkway. Nobody would ever think that a building like that would go there either. But if you look at the building, it's architecturally pleasing. And it does kind of fit with the other buildings in Chappaqua.
Better than lots of people thought it would.
Yeah, so that's all that I'm saying about what might appear to be, you know, on Washington Avenue again. And I want to give you congratulations for making such a beautiful paved Washington Avenue for Con Ed to come by and dig it up again.
All right, Ward. I mean, your butter churned thing, staring rings in my ears.
You have a good memory, and so do I. And I remember you saying that if Con Ed comes by and chews up that road after we repaved it, they're going to come back and make a brand new. So I'm hoping.
All right, stay tuned.
I'm running, I'm running out of wheels. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for coming, Tom, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other comment of any sort from the public or shall we scamper to our resolutions? Let me just frame myself mostly here. Apologize for those who are watching on Zoom as I use my little joystick on the phone to move the camera around here, perhaps giving you vertigo. Okay, let me share my screen, and we will go to the resolutions.
So now, are we using our mics or is it Al?
Al is going to e your.
But I'm also recording.
Okay, both, okay.
All right, here we go. Resolution number 37, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on February 14, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very nice, she said resolve with a sort of stentorian confidence. Comments or corrections to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you, Paul. David, number 38. Oh, hold it, I forgot Paul is here, actually.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm like, am I getting excluded?
No, you're not. You can take number 38.
Yeah, thank you.
Paul Alvarez, number 38.
Oh, man. Who about reading this one?
Out of sight, out of mind, but now I apologize. Watch your step, you can do all the rest of it.
Eddie, which, should I do the whole thing across?
I don't think you have to read all the accounts. Why don't you just describe the categories and the total amount in each category?
Okay, thank you. Okay. The result that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year of 2022 as listed below. For conference training, 667. For vacation buyback, 1,389. Police patrol vacation buyback, $425. Parking enforcement, full-time, 2,500. Parking enforcement, full-time, 1,210. Rec administration vehicle, $800. Parks equipment, $10,000. The rec administration part-time, 2,500. Rec part-time, 3,721. Panther overtime, $4,000. The adapted rec contractual, $95.26. Uniforms, $25. The pool project transfer to capital, $5,450. And highway equipment, $13,000, for a total of $45,782.26. Also, there is a transfer for the pool project of $5,450.
Detail as stated in the record. Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on any of these budget transfers? All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. Okay, now, David, 39.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated February 28, 2022 for fiscal year ending 2022, covering check numbers 102887 to 102988. From the general fund, $129,638.3. From the water fund, $7,350.42. From the capital fund, $41,499.63. From the refuse fund, $1,125.95, for a total of $179,614.3 payment of claims attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions on the payment of claims?
Nice low number this month.
Yeah, keep it low every month, right?
We will try.
Maybe we just stop paying bills. All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. Number 40, Michael.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby waive the 30-day requirement to local municipalities for an amended liquor license application by Jacob Burns Film Center, 364 Manville Road, to the New York State Liquor Authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
Amended again.
They amended again, yes.
The laws keep changing, so they keep having to resubmit a new application for what they want.
So as reported, the Burns is looking to create sort of a modest wine bar kind of a thing on the third floor hall. So in the end, the liquor license applications are a decision of the State Liquor Authority. They have nothing to do with us other than the fact that we can require a 30-day waiting period for comment, but typically waive it, as we recently did for another such venture. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. All right, now we're going to go back, as if you were sitting here. Paul, 41.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to advertise for bids for electrical services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pretty straightforward?
Yep, our existing contract is ending in the next couple of months, so we'll go back out. Oh, maybe, sorry, that was electrical.
Now, 42, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to advertise for bids for plumbing services.
Sorry, Peter.
I think we didn't vote.
Oh, we didn't vote?
On 41, did we?
Did we? We did, I thought we did.
Oh, okay, sorry.
All right. Did we have a second on 42?
Aye.
Does anyone have an opinion about advertising for bids for plumbing? All in favor?
Aye.
A motion approved.
Sorry, who seconded that one?
Paul did.
I seconded.
Thank you.
Okay, 43 now. Whose turn is it?
David's.
Resolve, consider authorizing the closure of Memorial Plaza for the Pleasantville Day celebration on Saturday, May 21, 2022. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the closure of Memorial Plaza for the Pleasantville Day celebrations on Saturday, May 21, 2022, from 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And further resolve that the Board of Trustees authorizes the police chief to post no parking signs effective Saturday, May 21, 2022, and to tow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
P-Ville Day is back, Saturday, May 21. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, be there or be square.
Do we have any other updated changes to it? Or kind of, if it ain't broke, don't fix it?
Well, I think.
Thing we've heard?
The idea is to do it in a similar way. There may be some changing of the guard in the volunteer structure.
Yep, there's some new members to the planning committee, but Mike Newman's been working with some folks, so more to come.
So let me ask you a question about both Pleasantville Day and, I guess, to a lesser or different extent, the ragamuffin parade. So at both of those times, we're bringing people into all of Memorial Plaza, right? The, and my sense is that the, if I remember the numbers right, that our farmer's market has been growing sort of week by week. Is there a reason why we displace the farmer's market for that instead of doing these things in the afternoon?
Well, ragamuffin, we.
Ragamuffin, we delayed it this year.
Correct.
No, I know, but like in general, why would we not keep the farmer's market going since that sort of attracts people from all over and the parade could pretty much be anytime, right?
It's kind of nice to have a little cross pollination.
Yeah, I mean, it's a struggle, and it is likely an increasing struggle in the possibility this year that the Manville Road. possibility this year that the Manville Road project would have already begun. So , very, I mean, I think that's a worthy discussion. Let's not divert.
It also has to do with the walk run that happens in the morning.
Right, true.
Please overtime.
There's a lot going on that day. Certainly Pleasantville Day requires the whole plaza, and there's no farm market, and that's always been the case, so.
Yeah.
All right. All in favor of number 43?
Three.
43. All right, okay. 44, Michael.
Whereas Village Code 185-44 establishes supplemental zoning provisions regarding affordably, affirmatively furthering fair housing units, and whereas pursuant to Village Code 185-44G2, the village shall designate a governmental office or department or local not-for-profit agency to administer and monitor the requirements of said village code. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby designates the County of Westchester as the monitoring agency responsible for administering the requirements of Section 185-44 of the Village Code.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Eric, you want to explain?
Yes.
Sure. So this section of the code provides us the ability to declare another agency, in this case, Westchester County, as the administrative agent for affordable housing. We've been historically partnering with the Housing Action Council. They've notified us that they're actually starting to move away from, from this work. So the county is currently working to partner with another nonprofit. And in the meantime, we're moving to recognize the county as the administrative unit. And at the time that they do bring on the non-for-profit agency, that's who we'll work through now. The Housing Action Council, when we do have affordable units that pop up in different developments, there is a marketing requirement where the units are marketed across the, the region, Pupnom, Westchester, Duchess, Rockland. And people who kind of meet a certain threshold can apply. And then we have the lottery system. This is all the marketing, making sure people actually meet these thresholds. Takes a lot of time and due diligence. So that's why we work through the county and subsequently this nonprofit to make sure all of that is done according to the law.
Okay.
And the short version of a, of a long story is that our resolution, our zoning code, just like the zoning code of many communities, requires a 10% set aside for affordable housing for any new projects that are 10 or more units.
That's right.
So for example, in the Toll Brothers project, that's an ownership project, 68 units, seven are affordable. Likewise, for a rental unit, 10% set aside for affordability based on a threshold established annually by the Housing and Development Department in Washington, based on a, folks earning a percentage of the average income for a family unit of that size. So nothing about this resolution changes any of that, just simply a matter of making sure it happens the way it's supposed to. All right? All in favor?
Aye.
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 David is down the hall. Are you voting aye on that, David?
He's got it.
Aye.
He did. He voted aye. Okay, back to Paul, number 45.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby schedules a public hearing for March 14, 2022 at 8:00 PM to consider introducing the Law 2 of 2022 to amend Chapter 173, Article 7, Section 66 of the Code of the Village of Pleasantville concerning parking on Bedford Terrace.
Is there a second?
The law, the law is attached.
Is there a second? So we just
So, second.
What ended up happening is Loa didn't get the advertisement in on time, so we didn't have the 10-day notice. Our village code requires that we notice through the examiner and Loa. So we're just making sure we're fulfilling our obligation.
So these are modest changes to some of the parking regulations of the old village. Michael, as an old village resident, has spearheaded this venture?
Yes, at the endpoint here, very, very modest parking changes. So reducing three spaces from one-hour parking to 15-minute parking during the dinnertime rush on Bedford Terrace to ease congestion and increase pedestrian safety at that location. And there will be also some, some more vigilant observation of parking on the, on the intersection overall, especially during the dinner hour.
All right, so if you have opinions on that, come visit public hearing on March 14, either in person or via Zoom. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Nicole, 46.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village treasurer to create a capital account for the Manville Road corridor improvement project for the project construction phase.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is just the administrative venture to manage what is soon to come.
That's right.
For this project.
That's right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved.
Aye.
David, 47.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the retirement from police officer Sean Lyons effective February 25, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
So it's worth stopping here for a moment to make clear that Sean Lyons is a child of Pleasantville. He has been a police officer here. And as he noted in his letter of resignation, he says, "It's been a great honor to be able to serve and protect the residents of the village that I was born and raised in." He goes on to make a number of, of great, great comments. I can tell you that when you think of the Pleasantville Police Department, Sean Lyons is one of the people you think of. He let me know in a conversation not long ago something I hadn't known, and that is, it was his father who planted the tree on, on the island at Manville and Edgewood. And so he goes back that far, even as we're now looking at the tree leaning a bit and wondering whether it may need to go into retirement, just like Sean did. But all I can say is that a great, good service for a very long time from a guy who could be counted on in lots of ways. Was an EMT, was a volunteer in so many ways, and a real anchor of the community. We were glad to have you. We're going to miss you, and we view you as a son of Pleasantville forevermore. So if we refuse this resolution, then we have to come back.
Yeah, I think he's already in Florida, so.
Yeah, he's afraid of that. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Michael, 48.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation from school crossing guard Deborah Patton effective March 11, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sorry to see Deborah go as well, but she doesn't have the longevity that a guy like Sean has. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Is there any further new business or comment of any kind on any subject? Comment from the public on any subject? All right, we are shortly to go into an executive session on contractual matters and matters of personnel. Let me just remind you that, as we said at the outset, we're back in person at Village Hall, but also hybrid on Zoom. So you have your options either way, to come visit us in person at AD Wheeler or to sign on via Zoom. You can get the Zoom link at pleasantville-ny.gov. And if you sign up for our village board agendas under the news, you can get that stuff sent to you automatically. So we will be back here on Monday, the 14th. In the meantime, we have a work session via Zoom on the police budget and the DPW budget this coming week, Monday, the 7th, and another on Tuesday, the 8th, as we work towards the preliminary budget on the schedule Eric already reported.
We have a couple of work session items before the executive sessions.
Okay. Is there a motion to return to work session and then into executive session?
For, just a correction, real property.
Oh, sorry, yes. Real property.
So moved.
So considering we've recorded the work session, is there